All right. Mike, you tell me when you're.
I'm live.
Okay. We're gonna get started with the Roswell Valley Coalition, Arvada City Council Candidate Forum. Thank you all for attending. And we're gonna have some announcements, a few brief announcements for RDC first, and then we'll get started with candidate introductions. We've got lots of questions tonight, and we'll go through the ground rules here in a minute, but I wanted to get some, before we get started, Bill is going to lead us with the pledge of allegiance, do it all.
Well, to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
My name's Eric. Okay. We're a little challenged in this room, but it's a great space. We love sharing with our partners. Okay, so I want to tell you a little bit about RDC. Our mission statement is working together to protect our community and follow your life in the Roswell Valley. So you are technically in Roswell Valley, right or not? We're a nonprofit corporation, we founded in 2021. We're a community rights member organization, so anyone who's twenty in Arvada, and we also have technical leaders. We are all about protecting annual resources. We oppose incompatible development, that's probably our number one thing. And we support responsible, compatible development, that's because we're one A and one B. We don't like being compatible, we like compatible. And then we are also a community-focused collaborator. So we try to move people together and talk, and we have a certain discourse, and we get to know the ins and outs of things and solve problems. Our role is expanding as we grow our coalition. It's changed a lot over the years. You can see a lot of the different people around the rooms, all those community partners, all have kind of spawned from RDC. So that's kind of a cool thing, we've grown in that way. So. I wanted to introduce our board, not all of them are here, but some of them are here. Rich Bowling, Westwoods Mesa, Steve Manik, I'm Gina Halcy, Battle of the Maple Valley. Karen Hirsch is with Community Equestrian and Sheeps Out of Town. And then we have Phil Langford from Westwoods Lakes, Mike Rollick from Apple Meadows, and Mike Schweitzer from Wildflower Farms. These people feel valued and proud to listen to. I also want to shout out to our HOA partners and our association partners. These are HOAs that belong to us, to RDC as an HOA member, which comes with some extra benefits. So if you can go online and scan the QR code, talk nicely, and we'll talk a little bit about that if you want your HOA to be involved at that level. So Maple Valley, Trail Ridge Villas is a newer member. Our founding partner was protecting Maple Valley Park and Roswell as a big trail, that's what's been shared out there with that logo on there. McIntyre Neighbors United, GIOES, Westwood Slips, Wildflower Ponds, Westwoods Villas, Broad Lake, and Community Equestrian. So these are all partners that have a little bit larger role, and they help pay the bills. Okay, so we're gonna get started. We're gonna do a Jack and Jill tonight, and so I'm gonna give you a little bit of the guidelines. Some housekeeping, if you need to use the restroom, it's just outside the hallway. We were gonna give tickets if somebody went out, and I think there's plenty of seats, so we're not too worried about it. So if you need to use the restroom, feel free to get out and go around. We're gonna jam through this tonight. We have a big league full program, and we have climate regulation. So we want to hold on time and get in as many questions as possible for our candidates. So let's go with the ground rules. Each candidate will get two minutes for their two remarks, and three minutes for closing statements. All other questions will have a seventy-five second time limit. One minute you get the yellow paddle, the shoulder paddle, so. One minute you may see the yellow paddle. And then, that means you have fifteen seconds. And then, when the red paddle goes out, that means you're done. So we ask that you respect the other candidates, and know how much you allow a time limit. You can always have a topic at the end during your closing remarks. So we'll also have up to, you can all have nine quick lightning rounds, where each candidate will be asked to answer only yes. But that's gonna be about that. But you have to have that game. So. The microphones at each table, we will pass them, and we are gonna go randomly, left to right, right to left, start with these people, so it's, you know, not always the same person starting and finishing. So just know that. Professional decorum is expected from candidates and audience attendees. You can share the bomb rock with us, but you can't share here. And you can't leave the bagels here either, so. So we all have to know by right the professional decorum, that's a must. The questions asked are summarized from citizen input to RDC throughout the year and based on current issues in Arvada. Due to time constraints, we will not be able to take audience questions tonight, so if you have another topic to ask that is not covered, be sure to connect with the candidates after the format. Their website info is also on our website, it's also arvadacoalition.org website. So thank you again for attending to hear from the candidates running for the Arvada City Council.
Oh, I was supposed to introduce us, but we're the moderators.
Hey, good evening everybody, my name is Mike Rollick, and thank you for being here. Thank you all, and the candidates for running, first of all. It's not very easy to get up and decide one day, let's do this, and let's run for an office, go through everything that you guys go through, so we want to give a lot of respect to that as well. Real quick, we have a lot of partner organizations here tonight. McIntyre Neighbors United, they're out there on that table out there. Please stop by and check out what we're doing with that as well. Friends of Roswell, great neighborhoods, very important situation going on over there as well. Westwoods is here, and I'd love anyone from Arvada Voices. You're here, okay, you're here, okay, great. And I love you breaking up, but please, a lot of partner organizations right now, we're finding this amazing network effect right now of everybody who's interested in a particular topic. We all help each other out, we're always looking for volunteers, just remember that, always looking for support. Check out the QR code also, there's a state land survey. So obviously, we're talking predominantly land use tonight. The state has decided to insert itself into land use with things like HB thirteen thirteen this does as well. So we have a QR code over there and a land use survey that goes right back to DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, as we're looking to maybe look at new rules, possibly new legislation. Would it be a bad idea? Also, we do have a petition for the Time Placement Banner for psilocybin mushrooms, you know, secondhand mushrooms, we want to call that. But we do have that Time Placement Banner, because that came through in August in Arvada, and now we're looking at what other cities have done for setbacks and what have you, what's legal to do in the state to protect citizens' residences. And if I could, we could have a moment of silence, we've had some fallen heroes lately. There was a firefighter, KJ Yacaveta. If you guys are familiar, he had gotten injured in the line of duty back, I think it was 2011, if I know correctly. And from what I read, he got hurt so badly his radio was melted. He recovered, he came back to the cert, and then he retired, and he has since passed from cancer. And also, Joe Henkler, sorry, from the Old Town Business Association has just passed as well. So just a quick moment if we could. Thank you. And one last really important rule, we've all came as friends, we all leave as friends. They're all running for an office, but it's a very honorable group, all of them. So I just want to make sure about that. So here we go.
We actually saved time on our parts, and you have extra time. Manager, my question, Mike, my question. Okay, you're going to start with the candidate introductions. So let's start on the left with Eric, and we'll just kind of move our way all the way over to the right. And you'll have two minutes if we get our time back up.
You guys should keep your time, right? I think.
There it is. There we go.
All right, let's start.
Okay, Eric.
Thanks. My name's Eric Bojstad, I'm a District One candidate for City Council. A lot of the issues that we're hearing or visiting tonight are occurring in the District Four area, foreign, unincorporated county. I was a candidate last year for Jefferson County Commissioner, and a lot of the same issues were present at that election. Of course, I didn't make it for him last year because I was a third-party candidate, but Mike has said it right. Issues that are really important to me, no one goes into politics wanting to make developers rich. That's not motivation for anybody here. No one does that. And we're dreamed of that, we're not here to do that. I think we're all here for the same reason. We do want to be able to control them legally and give them fair rules to abide by. So I'm an engineer by trade. I have a lot of these issues I can look at from a technical standpoint, take off, step back and look at objectively, and determine if the project, not to make social sense, but technical sense. And a lot of projects that I've looked at, or some of the projects that I've looked at, coupled or represented here, may not make sense either, either way. So I want the city to do right, not only by residents, you know, I live in an old development, not affected by natural disasters, or a lot of, a lot of things that, you know, make sense, you know, for us today will impact this community for fifty or a hundred years.
Well, first I want to start by thanking the Roswell Valley Coalition voting this forum tonight. Thank you all for being here. It's so important that you are engaged around local governments, so it's really, I'm really happy to see you. And I want to thank the other candidates, because they are sacrificing a part of their lives to run and to share their talents and skills with our community and to be of service, that's really important. I'm Randy Warmer, and I'm running for reelection in District One. And four years ago, when I decided to run, I made the decision because I wanted to give back to the community that I love. When Scott and I moved to Arvada fourteen years ago, we found something here that we weren't expecting, and that was great neighbors. It was our neighbors, and fellow church members that came out and supported us, and we were fostering kiddos in Jefferson County foster care. And when Scott had a stroke, it was our neighbors who came out and gave us meals, gave Scott fries to make different appointments. And then, these past four years have been really meaningful to me and have been a wonderful opportunity to meet more of our Arvada residents, from Lake Arbor to Davis Lane Park. And together, we've made a difference in our neighborhoods and in our community. We made our streets safer, we have removed tall grass to help protect our homes from fire, we even built some pop holes. And so I'm running for reelection, because I want to continue to do that amazing work with all of you. And of course, we've got some great challenges ahead. My purpose are to invest in our roads and sidewalks, to increase multi-modal transportation and improve accessibility. That's an important one to me and my husband. And creating greater access for affordable housing for our children, for our workers, and our seniors, and to make our community resilient and economically viable to the future. I'm running for reelection because I believe in our community, and I believe in the power that we can do together.
Thank you so much to all of you for being here. Thank you to Roswell Valley Coalition for all the amazing work you do, connecting the community and creating spaces like this to have the tough and complicated conversations. And thank you to everyone here for choosing to be here instead of home watching the brown coast go brown coast down. So I truly, we truly appreciate you. And my name is Rebecca Lovison, I'm running for Arvada City Council in District Three. And I wish I could tell you that I have a metric, and that I have an answer to every question and three solutions to go with it. But alas, I do not. I just have my compass. And my compass are my values, and I have three core values. Bravery, growth, and reliability. The bravery to do things like this, to stand up here, speak up, speak out. Growth through listening. This job is to represent. And how can we know what we're representing if we're not knocking the doors or having conversations like this to find out what is important to you? And reliability, to show up and to follow through. Because from what I hear, what you want to see in representatives is if you call, email, text, they follow up. Your voice is heard. So expectations for me tonight is, I again won't have all the answers, but I can tell you with how I'm gonna solve problems, and that my important values are what we do, they are how I make decisions, and they are how I spend my time. Thank you again, Rebecca Lovison. Website is rebeccaforarmad.com.
Should be on. Maybe you can put the switch on there.
How you doing? My name is Aaron Skov, and I am running for Arvada City Council, District Three, which maybe you just wouldn't know as sort of the Old Town Arvada area. A little bit about me, I am an Arvada native, and I went to Fremont Elementary, I went to Aurora Middle, and went to Arvada West High School. I live in Old Town, Arvada. My daughter is fourteen. We have lived in Old Town, well, I kind of moved out for a little bit, but moved back in in 2004, we're all there. Old Town, Arvada is my daughter and I's home. We love this city. Whether that's going to ice cream or going to the library, this is our place. I have nothing but love for her, that's why I've stayed for all these years, fifty-four to exactly. And so, you know, I think my perspective is a little bit different just because of the fact that I am old school, you know. I have grown up in this community. My dad had a house at the top of the Orde Road Hill, and unfortunately, that's that. The pumpkin massacre at the side of that hill is a generation, my kid. It happens every day after Halloween. So if I've seen that mess, that would be my generation of kid that lived at that. So I'm running on, really, basically, my biggest push would be the homelessness issues that are in the Old Town, Arvada area. My concentration is really on District Three. I know that we are sitting in District Four, and we're gonna be talking about a lot of citywide issues, but I have a true passion for the Old Town, Arvada area. Thank you for coming out to listen to everybody tonight. AaronSkov.org is my website, and notice I named it .org because you're an org. I know it's all a little part of it together.
Good evening, my name is Denise Spartis, and I'm so glad to be here with you today. Thank you to the Roswell Valley Coalition for your support, for organizing this support forum. I'm a Colorado native, raised in Lakewood. And for the last eleven years, my family and I have been trapped to call Arvada our home. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist, a wife, and a mom of two. For the past fifteen years, I've worked in corrections, serving individuals with some of the most serious mental health challenges. In that work, I've learned how to listen to all sides, even when the conversations are hard, and how to build bridges between people with very different perspectives. Those skills, listening, problem-solving, and building trust, are exactly what I want to bring to City Council. At the heart of my campaign are the three Cs. Connection, conversation, and community. Connection means bringing people together across differences. Conversation means being willing to engage in the tough and necessary discussions. And community means keeping Arvada a place where families, businesses, and neighbors pride together. I know that many of us, issues like traffic congestion, land use, and growth are front and center. We need smarter approaches to transportation that make it easier and safer to get around. We need thoughtful land use decisions that balance growth but protecting the character of our neighborhoods. And we need real two-way community engagement, so residents feel heard and included in shaping Arvada's future. Like many of you, my family and I chose Arvada because of a strong sense of belonging. Over the past eleven years, I've seen firsthand how much people care about this city. As a council member, I will work to support local businesses, strengthen infrastructure, and ensure that Arvada continues to be a place where everybody has the opportunity to succeed. Thank you for giving this momentary debate, I'd love to hear from you, and I invite you to contact me at arvada.com, together through connection, conversation, and community.
Hi, everybody, I'm Mike Griffith, and I'm running for the outlier seat for Arvada City Council. Thank you all for being here tonight. I really appreciate all the time and attention that RDC and several of the other neighborhood organizations have put to this forum and others. I'd like to tell you just finally, the reason why I'm running is very similar to the reason you're all up here tonight. Somebody last month told me that if you don't take an interest in your government, they're sure to take an interest in you. So one way or another, government is gonna have, decisions are gonna get made. It's important to be in the room for those decisions that affect you and your family and your children, and other generations who post political afterthought. Those decisions are gonna be made whether or not you step up. So who knows to all of you who've been here tonight, because it's a big part of the equation. So in addition to that, I'd like to say that I've also lived by my motto of making things better than I found them. So my family and I moved to Arvada a little over ten years ago, in 2014. And since then, we've had three young kids, they're all part of the generation of Arvadas. And I've seen a lot of communities in the city of Arvada. I'm sure you all have been really building a lot of things, the infrastructures and keeping up with it. How many stoplights have you hit on the way over here? How many street races have you witnessed on eighty-six Avenue? How many condos can we possibly build? How many apartments can fit into your single-family neighborhoods? These are all critical questions, that your presence in a meeting like this means that you're committed to have those conversations with City Council members, like some of the ones that will be sitting on council in a couple of weeks. So I thank you so much for coming here. I'd like to tell you about my background and interior and design. I've worked extensively for the city of Arvada on our transportation plan. And I have a lot of ideas, I don't have to fix things, but I don't have all of them, which is why we need more input. So I look forward to telling them more about it, and thank you so much for having us here tonight.
You guys are good. Everybody's on time. That stop sign.
I thought you were recording your content.
All right, so question one is for all candidates, common topic of traffic. And we're gonna start over here, we'll just go right, we'll just start the key line, and then a little more right back the other way. Actually, we should mix it up a little bit. Let's start with Denise. We'll kind of do it grossly. You have seventy-five seconds to respond to the question. Arvada and Jeffco are currently revising the transportation master plans, and over the past year did several outreach events, community surveys, and a custom plan to address traffic planning moving forward. Increased traffic and engaging infrastructure in Arvada is a major concern, especially when it comes to new development in areas such as northwest Arvada. Many of the traffic studies provided by developers are inaccurate, sometimes biased, and not realistic. What solutions would you propose to deal with the traffic problems in Arvada as the city grows to its capacity in the coming years? And how would we infrastructure and funding? In the case of industrial or commercial development, would you consider truck and autonomous vehicles to be declined as a condition of approval by the City Council for these types of developments?
Take seventy-five seconds.
So, hold on. So basically, if you want to summarize, we're RDC, you know.
Let me guess, Mike wrote that one?
So. So it's basically, the topic is traffic, infrastructure, and we all know we have issues, and how are we gonna solve it, knowing what's coming? And some of the things coming are autonomous vehicles. And as the city grows and there's commercial development that is gonna deliver with a car or something that isn't have a person in it. All those things are things that we're very fond of making, so you're gonna get any of those tonight. So you can take any part of that to chat about for seventy-five seconds.
Yeah, it was the autonomous vehicle routes or truck routes, not just the trucks, but it's also sometimes you have hazmat truck routing, and then it's heavy truck routing, and things like that, that was quite.
Mike, go ahead. Wow, okay, so that was a big question. You know, I think that there's ideas about like widening lanes. I know that that is gonna come at an expense. Looking at ways to do that, looking at the bridge that goes over Indiana, and maybe working alongside the railroads and the companies that use that to transport boats and materials and things like that, meets widening that. These are all things that have a big expense, I'm sure. And it's also gonna be inconvenient for a while while those things are happening. But we have to look at being able to move traffic at a much faster pace if we can, and also maybe limit some areas where the traffic can go. I think there's gotta be a balance. We know Arvada's a place people love to come, love to live here, they wanna, they wanna have a home here, so there's gonna be traffic. So we have to figure out a way to create that in a thoughtful way, through balance, and inviting people to the table that can help create that for us.
No, because I thought it was, she said last first, so I was just like, so I'm like.
You guys need a rest of part.
All right, so traffic in western Arvada. There's a couple things here, we'll divide it up, I think, on projects the city can lead, projects that we're gonna have to be partnered with another agency, and projects we're just gonna have to advocate for. I'll go through advocating quickly, RTD is an agency that we do not control. If we can get better bus routes and increased schedules into western Arvada, that would be great. But the city cannot do that on its own, so it has to advocate for that. It has to demonstrate that there's a need and a fight for partnerships. There's a project that I think we're definitely gonna need to make in this, next Indiana. So that's gonna be discussed around from west Arvada. Indiana's jammed up, there's the Tressel Bridge, there's a lot of towns there. And so CDO, we got a primary partner in opportunity there. And other municipalities, take in a deal with CDO that says, look, if you give this to the city or the municipality and take over continuity, we'll save you a ton of money on maintenance if you give us some money to help widen. So a hundred and sixty million dollars, sixty million dollars for rail, and that project will take care of. The next thing is projects we can lead directly. I think we need a secondary egress to several of our neighborhoods, including Lake Aurora in case of fire in RDC. Think these are critical infrastructure investments that we can make. I have to talk more about that in one minute, just a second.
Our timer, our timer is not cooperating over here. I can see it on the.
You can see it on your side still.
Yeah, we need to be able to see it in the center.
By the way, thank goodness I got to go after. Any questions or?
Yeah, everyone gets the same question, they all get to answer the same.
We just go, is the timer going?
Just go. Just go.
I can set it on its own.
Alright, so again, yeah, thank you, Mike, for leading that up. Who's the engineer? I'm certainly not. You know, what I think I need to look at is the fact that I am running for the District Three seat, so my emphasis is still always gonna be there. I kind of have a mantra that I've always lived my life by and I'm owning this campaign bottom, and that would be, watch the pennies and the dollars will follow. Dollars will take care of themselves if you watch the pennies. What I'm gonna be looking at with these types of issues is sensibility and the right tons of monies and budget put into things. I want to give you an example. When was the last time you drove down Fifty Second Avenue between, say, Harrison and Independence? And I'm talking about that in and out smurfy thing, that's the street building, the city building, with all those kind of things. Yeah, I'm with you on that one too. It's just, sense of sensibility was not, I think, a good consideration when it comes to traffic flowing in that particular part of the city. Another example, what I would like to use, and I use it all the time, is who remembers the temporary rubber speed bus on Indian River Avenue Avenue? How many hundreds of thousands of dollars will be based on that coming to traffic? Watch the pennies, I don't know about.
Alright, so we have some of the worst streets in the state. We're in the top five, which is better than Rocky, so we'll say that. But we've also got a lot of paved lane lines. So not only do we have some of the worst streets currently, we have a lot of them. And off of your question, one thing important to me is the safety of folks that decide to walk. I live over Oak Street and when I had my little one, the sidewalk is very big and I would swish the stroller down. And now with her tricycle, it's still pretty hard to do that. And I just wanna get her around this walk right over to the park. So one thing important to me with this question is what are we going to do to protect the folks that want to fight, that want to walk? Because healthy communities where you can work, you can live, and you can play in the same place, and you can walk or you could bike there. And then, what I've also seen with the sidewalks is you've got hedges and bushes and holes, oh my. So you're trying to get around all of that. I would say with Oak Street where I live, is one lane is the size of two. One thing we can do is make that into one lane so we can have more safety for everyone.
So when it comes to our traffic, I mean, there's two big picture things we need to do. One is we need to look at how we can ease the flow and make traffic flow more efficient on our peripheral streets. And so one of the main things that we've got to replace our signals that are outdated, so we gotta make them synchronized, and we gotta make them sort of smart, and know what traffic flow and demand is at that certain time of day, and make them work accordingly. Also, I think the other piece we need to do is look in our neighborhood streets. If we're going to do the opposite and look at how do we get the traffic calming in our neighborhood streets? And so that's creating buffer between our sidewalks and our bike paths and making those more friendly for non-vehicle folks that are moving around and need to get around in our neighborhoods. So this is the two big things that I see, big picture things we need to look at. You're gonna hear this repeatedly from, repeatedly from me tonight, but I think our opportunity is coming to really address and move forward as we update our comprehensive plan. And so looking at our transportation needs and addressing traffic, it's gonna be a great opportunity for us to do that with our updated comprehensive plan.
I think a lot of what's said is pretty right on. With regard to repaving streets, our repaving budget is actually only about fifteen million dollars a year. It's just not enough to do, really live within our, yeah. They'll live and have smooth streets for a lot of the neighborhoods. Fortunately, my neighborhood isn't one of those, but I haven't been out in District One walking the streets. It's come up repeatedly throughout our residents. We need to make Arvada an attractive place to live still, so there will be hard decisions coming up in order to make budget, budget available to do the repaving. Also, do you want to address the autonomous vehicles part of the question? That would be really interesting. I'm in the parking industry, designing garages and so forth. Why, we've been talking about this for a long time, but say you take a, take your autonomous car out to the airport, why wouldn't you just send the car home? So parking is also a, while you're gone, and how to come pick you up. So parking is also a huge factor for transportation as well too. And free parking is something that we expect.
Alright, thank you all for those questions. And we're looking at our projected time versus where we're at. We're actually early. So if you guys feel okay with going up from ninety seconds to seventy-five, I feel that first question was a little constrained. And we're way early, so we're gonna run that experiment and make sure that we're not running out of time. So go with everybody. Okay, cool. Question number two, we'll start with who?
Could you?
Go with the starters.
Oh, we're gonna start us. We start it over here. Just start with the other.
Alright, we'll start all on the, ever? We'll start with ratings? Okay, so high density versus low density, a really big conversation these days. What is your position on high density development in Arvada? And how do you see these types of projects fitting into Arvada's current landscape? Recently, with LVC amendments that were passed in August, motels and hotels are now being allowed in fixed-use suburban. Do you agree with this change? And also, do you support Arvada joining the other several cities such as Grima Village or Barra in the lawsuit against the State Council twenty-four thirteen thirteen, which was the transparent area of districts, and twenty-four thirteen oh four, which was the elimination of the minimum parking requirements for city developers? Why? Well, why not?
Alright, so it seems like I remember the beginning of the question. I will address the lawsuit for sure, but I'll start with high density and how we move forward. I think, you know, growth is something we have to plan for and we have to be smart and forward-thinking. And the other word that I think comes to mind quite importantly, we have to strike the right balance. The question is how do we get there? And so, coming back to what I said earlier about the comp plan and updating that, my goal through that process is to make sure that every neighborhood has a seat at the table and is part of that planning process and helping decide what then becomes our lane development code of what our densities are. So it has to come down to the local level and that will be controlled. It brings me to the lawsuit. It's so important that we preserve our local control and I'm in strong favor of our decision to move forward with that lawsuit. And the big, you know, challenge, problem for me with how that all happened is taking away our residents' rights to have a public hearing about these decisions and to have a voice. And so to me, that is crucial, and that is part of our democracy. So we have to be able to maintain that and protect that. And so that's why we filed that lawsuit, because if we had followed the two bills of the past, we would not be able to have public hearings about those high density decisions that you mentioned. And again, we have to make sure that it's right for the community that it's going to be in. And so we need to have that space for the public to sit there.
We're going by this, right? Please.
Um, we can, we have to, but I'm here.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I have to consider the fact that when I moved to north Arvada with my family in twenty eighteen, we did something because it was more low density. We had lived downtown already. So those considerations are important for each of us of why we chose to live here. So I think probably in our heart of hearts, we favor low density as opposed to high density. But we're already here. It's hard to make room for very tightly packed development. So in terms of answering that question, I would continue to favor low density. Maybe challenging to overdevelop or concentrate developments despite what the state's objectives are. With regard to the comprehensive plan that's gonna be drafted soon, I would continue to follow that. My goal would be, you know, to keep low density and keep, yeah, and to make Arvada a destination in the metro area. With too much density, it's gonna be difficult in order to maintain the quality of life we enjoy.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, with high density, District Three has seen a lot of it, but it is also in the transit corner. I personally think one area to focus is that walkability, bikeability. If we're near public transportation, making it so you either don't have to go far or you don't have to take your car to the garage if you're heading to work and take the light rail. So making sure that that is an option in addition to the housing. And then, one other important thing is if we need more housing, we don't want to be putting in high rises where we have single-family homes. That is not the good, that is not a good fit for it. So if we do need more housing because we want our children to be able to live here or our grandchildren to be able to live here, where does that end? So that's where District Three is seeing a lot of that growth. The other thing is that it's not property tax that the city makes the money we need for traffic and different things from. It is sales tax. So we're not building homes to make more money. We're building homes because we need them. And I think what needs to be happening is that these conversations are happening with the community. What I hear a lot, and also Vista, right where that fear body came in, is they're like, what about this parking? Where are these people gonna park? And the conversation is not with the neighbors. So if a man said, I know we have the most conversation with you, you should know what's happening, you should have your voice, and you should have a say in how Arvada grows.
I think I have to look at things from a perspective of the fact that I grew up in the city. I have seen a lot change. And as a lot of people who have been here for a long time, maybe this is not the same on data that I grew up in. A lot has changed. And, you know, I'm of the opinion that the city employs some of the finest masterminds in the country. I mean, we have some of the best people that work for the city in the country. I'm not a politician. I'm your neighbor. And so I'm gonna be thinking about it from that perspective. What do I think that my city and old town of Arvada need? And I took this note down a little bit earlier, and then this that intellected. I will not represent any certain perspective. Every issue when we looked at until the right help comes down. So, you know, we are building in old town of Arvada on every scrap we can find. If you've noticed as you drive down the road, I mean, there's nothing left. It's a city that is built out, or at least in my district, it is. Are we gonna have to go up? I mean, gentrification is coming, and there's nothing that we can really stop with that. Other than the fact that we're gonna need to make sensible choices on what the next move is so that Arvada stays the way that it was when I grew up in.
Yeah, I have to agree. I moved to Arvada because of the low density of Arvada, and I've had time in the hospital before. I know that there's some challenges with accessible housing in our rural town. And I can understand how there may be times of push to increase the high density of our town in order to create some accessible housing. But we also have to consider that when we do increase the population, we also increase the problems that Arvada might be facing, such as pollution, higher traffic, of the young house population, things like that. But I do see how we may need a little bit of accessible housing so that young families can move to Arvada and grow their roots here. That's not the case with current housing situation. My house is kind of three times the amount than when I bought it. I can't afford to move out of my house right now. So I do think that we have to move thoughtfully forward with those sorts of things. But I agree. I like my space. I like my wonderful comfortable walks. I enjoy my neighbors. There feels like, have a big backyard. You know, and I think that that would be a challenge should we start to increase the density of the current town.
That wasn't us. That's. It was me. Sorry. Anyway, so I'll start off by saying I absolutely stand behind City Council to say we've been involved in the lawsuit through the state's overarching land use policy planning. I think we're gonna have an absolute right to. So the public council, like many of you who told them that, that council meetings, public speaking is terrifying, but do it, it's important. The next thing I'll say is that we have an upcoming opportunity that's fantastic for you all to be involved in. Heard about it, there's a conference planning. One of the things that I have specialized a little bit with some of the city council members, and I'm confident that I can work with them to get this done, is to set up a group of rooms. So we have five different neighborhood organizations already here. So when we start this comprehensive planning of defining what we're gonna do with land use and zoning and investments for the next ten, twelve years, we want speakers from all the community groups there and residents, so they can have their voices heard. Your leaders in your community, you can hear what you have to say. So in addition to that, I just wanted to mention also that the policy environment and framework that we currently have in the city makes it difficult to build anything other than luxury apartment homes or high-density apartments. And yes, we do want to increase our tax base so we can afford to build roads, to do infrastructure maintenance, all of that. But it's important what we build in the future so that folks aren't leaving our community to go work, coming in to go work in this own case, it's around eighty percent swap rate every day. And then making it difficult for us to have a stable tax base in the lunch of midday hours. Thank you.
You just answered my question for the next question.
I should have been.
I'm gonna expand on you. I'm gonna start with you. So we're gonna, the next question is for all candidates, and it's about the comprehensive plan for our neighborhood. So we're gonna go ahead and still try to do ninety seconds. If we get nine, we'll go back to seventy-five. So the question, then we'll probably, maybe we'll start where we are this time.
Great.
The comp plan will be revisited beginning at the end of twenty twenty-five. Citizen input is a vital part of long-term planning so the community can be assured that Arvada grows in the direction of the citizens' vision, not just what the city staff convisions. We have heard from many citizens who have participated in the comp plan process in the past that citizen participation and input is just checking a box and not necessarily considered. What will you do to ensure citizens are represented in the comp plan process and their concerns and interests are considered and dealt with equal way as staff recommendations? Because it is our city after all. Oops, cut my mic seat.
I think this is a great topic and thank you. I think this is very timely also. The citizens' voices of this community are the most important. Electoral officials take those opinions and then bring them to fruition. I'm not sure if anybody is aware of it. I recently read an article about a council proposing limiting and or changing the public comment section of city council meetings. They're proposing of reducing your voice. And that is not something I am supportive of. I would love to see that sort of be tabled, at least until a new council is elected. And I need to see that, this is just not okay. The voices of this community are what this community is. This is a body of seven, not a body of a hundred and twenty-four thousand. And so it is the, it is the voices of everybody in this room that needs to be brought forward. I am not in support at all of this limitation of public comment that is going around as of the last couple of weeks in the council. I've read about it, but I read a spectacular article actually on Arvada Voices that outlined the idea that they are gonna put this public comment section to the end of a meeting instead of at the beginning. That does not sit well with me. You are the voice. I am the voice. I am your neighbor.
So I honestly think I agree. I think citizens need to have their voices heard. And I think that's the most important part of government, period. And I think that's the most important part of government, period. Um, and I think that, you know, I live in one teeny tiny part of Arvada, and so I can only put forth my experience in that teeny tiny part of Arvada. And in order to have a comprehensive idea of the whole of Arvada, we need multiple voices. We need to be listening to one another, we need to have those hard conversations. Uh, my experience is not necessarily gonna be his experience and his experience. And so we have to find something that works for the majority of us, not just some of us. And so I think that, uh, my understanding of comprehensive plan is that, uh, it is a bit, it's a very thought-out plan. Um, and so I really have, you know, only been involved since July um, in, in understanding the functions of our local governments. Uh, and I, I, you know, I've selected leadership for our local government. I do believe that they will make good decisions, um, and I do think that we need citizens' voices that way.
Um, so I won't talk too much about the group of groups again, since we already talked about that. Um, what I'll do instead is talk about the importance of the at-large seat. So, uh, as most of you all know, there's four districts in Arvada, the at-large seat, which is one of the ones we're running toward here is every part of the city. There's a lot of different needs, there's a lot of community interests. Um, there's a lot of significant challenges that vary depending on what part of the city you're operating in. So one of the things that I would add and reinforce strongly is something I've already done in City of Arvada, is a citywide survey. I've done several of them. I don't know if any of you participated in the transportation management planning effort over the last few years, but we put together two surveys. The first one was asking all citizens in Arvadas to use an interactive map and to tell us where the issues were. So we have an idea as the evaluations team, where are the localized meetings for each of the communities to participate. We've got over a thousand respondents. And then after another year of revising and looking at different projects and everything else that could be happening in the city from an infrastructure perspective, we asked the citizens again, showing them seventy-five of the recommended projects from our theater models, and asked them to organize the projects according to importance, and also to prioritize the types of use. So this is just one aspect of the comprehensive plan, this is transportation. But we're also gonna be looking at land use, we're gonna be looking at sustainability, we're gonna be looking at all things that might impact our city in budget over the next ten, twenty years. So I've put it out to the public, and I've given the opportunity to interact directly with the proposed documents.
Alrighty, for those of you that don't know the comprehensive plan or have questions about that, that's the vision of the city. Uh, and then the land development department is laying the rules for that, and then the charter is the rules of the rules. Um, so that's what all that is. And I like what you said where right now it feels like engagement is just a box to check. And I think one of the first steps is including that in upcoming comprehensive plan for the next ten years. How do you want to be heard? We all have a different variety of ways we wanna be heard, we have a different schedule. Is it earlier in the morning in person with coffee? Is it a poll you'd like to receive through email? Is it someone knocking on your door? How do you want to be heard? Uh, how do we get that information? We need to truly engage the community. Uh, because engaging the community, in my opinion, is a two-way street. It's not just coming to city council and speaking up. Uh, city council can't talk back, that's not a conversation. Uh, it is having a conversation on your front porch, the playground with our kiddos. But where, where do you want to be heard? And I think that's one of the first questions that needs to be answered. Another area is maybe you don't wanna talk to a city council member, maybe you wanna talk to your neighbors. Uh, so the city does help provide walk-throughs. I think tying into that and being people where they're at is how we get free engagement. Thank you.
Uh, more public engagement is better, and that's how we make better decisions as elected officials. Um, and so I'm in strong favor of looking at how we can do that as we go through our comp planning revisions. Uh, and one thing that I am, uh, very interested in is looking at how we can better engage residents at the neighborhood level. And I think there's some good models out there for us to look at, one is San Diego and some other cities. And that's where they have local community planning areas and with resident-led community planning groups. And so what that would look like is, this is beyond the comp plan work, but then, then planning decisions happen, they have to go through those local planning groups before they can get to the planning mission. So I wanna look at how we can do something like that to, uh, again, come down to the neighborhood level, make sure that, that neighbor, uh, neighborhood has a say before a project, um, proceeds from that. And then, um, in reference to, uh, the conversation the council had in his last week, is the first time we saw it was something that staff proposed, it wasn't proposed by council. And, um, there was a proposal to do what Denver does, was to limit public comment to a half hour and remain at a limited reach to that. I think we need to have more public comments. And so I think that the council's directive to staff is to go back and look at what others see you're doing and come back with a better suggestion.
We're not leaving ourself. Eric, just a little bit to your floor.
Sure.
I wanna make sure you're.
Just on the edge of the frame.
You're up, yeah, we're gonna make sure you're all.
We have it.
There you go. You wanna see all.
Sure. Very noble. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I guess, let's see here. Um, how many of you know about the different types of democracy? There's actually three types of democracy. There's representative democracy, which we're doing here. Everybody goes out and makes their sales pitch and says, okay, this is what I wanna, you know, this is what I need for you all. There's another type which is direct democracy, that's valid issues. Um, those are very expensive in the state, um, and they should be proposed at C-level too. The final, uh, way to engage is actually a deliberative democracy, and actually, and that is citizens' assemblies. They're actually very powerful for land use, uh, uh, land use issues. You know, in particular, it should be like the, uh, early childhood center that was bought and, you know, intended to be, you know, a, a place to accommodate unhoused. Or, you know, perhaps even, you know, with, with the ability for you all to weigh in on a comprehensive master plan. Surveys are good, but, um, a, uh, a bona fide citizens' assembly which are conducted are, which are growing in popularity. It's a new form essentially of government. It acts as almost a recommendation to the council, very difficult for a council to go over the recommendation of citizens as, as a collective body. So that would be an interesting idea to explore. I'm just approaching the subject of it now, um, having learned about it about a year, kind of.
Hey.
Hello. Let's be thorough. Alright, this is the, uh, question four, and, uh, Mike, we'll start with you on this one. Alright. This is a, kind, kind of a complicated first part, but it's one thread to ask, one thread to question. Public agendas for a city council on planning commission meetings are required to be published by the Friday before the meeting. The current policy makes it difficult for all involved to read, digest, and study an issue prior to a hearing, especially technical data. By way of comparison, private sector business agendas are usually released ten to fourteen days in a batch. Some agenda packets we have seen are an excess of five hundred pages. And oftentimes, it appears the council relies on unelected staff or direction during the hearings, which can be seen as a delegation of power. If elected, will you commit to find a better process for community engagement such as releasing planning commission and city council, uh, agenda info maybe ten to fourteen days out instead of a Friday document dump list currently used? Thank you for that question. Uh, I'll speak to this as your current chair of the planning commission. Uh, I'm not sure when city council gets their packets, I'm sure Mr. Forman will tell us, but the planning commission gets them at the same time that they're made public. It's pretty much at the same time. And I can tell you this because I happen to have knew those big long documents. Uh, council can see the longer packets when you do a planning commission, and it's very difficult sometimes. Uh, so if there is a way to give material to the public and to the people making the decisions earlier and have more late time to study it, make sure that we understand the material that's being presented to us, then yeah, absolutely, I think that's sort of a fine idea. I'll tell you, since I have fifty-one seconds, that it's gonna be a challenge for staff. That doesn't mean it's impossible. But I, I know the pushback is gonna be, well, we don't always know, like, we're still working on those details or schedules aren't tight. These are not, or, uh, excuses that are underhumble. I think we can figure this stuff out. Uh, so yeah, I absolutely support that. I think it helps everybody as long as there's a way to do it.
Uh, yes, I would say yes. The idea of doing something that's five hundred pages long on a weekend terrifies neighbor minds in graduate school. Um, so, uh, I think the idea of having more time to go through the data, the material, have a better understanding, makes you a better decision-maker, period. Um, I would wanna understand why, it sounds like the reason that they get it delivered and, and the less the timeframe is because of maybe how long it takes to assemble it and what they're putting forward to the council comes in last minute. Um, so understanding that, seeing that there's a better, better direction for that. But absolutely, I would love to have more time to digest long documents.
Gosh, I'm gonna go back to this again. Um, not a politician, I'm your neighbor. Um, I'm all about streamlining everything. I mean, I wouldn't wanna read all that. Um, I'll leave that to Mike. Um, but, um, I mean, I, I think from the, from the public's perspective, streamlining things, to put things into, you know, can public average Joe Josephine, uh, British? I mean, there's gotta be a way, there's gotta be a way that we can look at some of these things more efficiently. I think the citizens could, we can have a voice on this stuff. Um, five hundred page documents from yah, yah, blah, blah, yah, and that is something I'd read. But, uh, I mean, there's always gotta be a way to find a way. I mean, if, if things are gonna be, uh, released at the last minutes, then why are we not talking about them later? I mean, it's just, uh, I, I think last minute ideas always just be equate to be rushed ideas, bad ideas, streamlined, sure.
Go back over here and you got the mic, go ahead.
Yeah, I remember that. Uh, yeah, of course. You know, there's some obvious, uh, technical kind of limitations. You know, city staff is rushing against what you're allowed, who will take the fight to the ladies' work for it. They're not available, maybe more with, you know, with public sees. Uh, you know, that, I, I do wanna follow up with the deliberative democracy and citizens' assemblies just as I think that's a, you know, a key portion of democracy, getting the information, that's actually part of the process. Citizens are actually, they're educated about the issue before they're asked to debate with their neighbors and clarify their point of view, so the research base is huge. So.
Well, as someone who reads those five hundred page documents to their weekend, I, I will say I'm very grateful that we moved our council meetings from, oh, excuse me, kind of gave us an extra that I need to read them. Um, and then my weekend is all just about preparing for council. But I, I think that it is, uh, very important that we make things as accessible to the public as possible. And so maybe one possibility is to get a draft earlier, recognize that's not the final packet, but at least it's providing information early enough so that, uh, residents have that information, know what's coming, prepare for it, and then when the final packet comes out, I can read more of the detail than after they open, so that might be an option.
Um, I believe that there are experts in the city, they are, uh, working for the city. There are experts in this community, and there are experts in this room. I've been to city council meetings where you've corrected something that's been on city council, and that's why getting the information out is so important. So if that is a possibility to get that information out sooner, yes. I agree with everyone here that that would be, that would be awesome. Um, additionally, I love this stuff. I love problem-solving, I like analyzing. You can ask my husband, this is a much better use of it than my home and my husband. Uh, so I wanna know everything there is to know about everything, uh, and if I don't, I wanna know who does have the information. So I believe it's also important that the relationship between the city council, uh, the mayor, and the community, and the employees are all happening. Uh, that way, you know, you know what's coming down, you, you know who to ask questions to, you know why the Geneva made this decision, or is proposed to do this or that, and we also know why the neighborhood doesn't want it. Um, I think for me, we gotta just raise the standard a little bit of leadership as well. If we're sending out newsletters and we're giving you the bullet points of what happens after the meeting as well, that's gonna build trust that you say, alright, I can be at home, I can have dinner, and my city council representative is gonna let me know what's up.
Alright. Our next question is regarding community health and safety. And we are gonna start from this side of the table. We went, we went first last time. Mike went first last time, so we'll go with. Eric, well, no, we're gonna.
No, no, she, she don't care.
I didn't press that. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about community health and safety. You'll have nine seconds to respond. Uh, West Arvada has seen significant growth, shifting from equestrian and rural lifestyles to more residential, commercial, light industrial uses. As development increases, concerns have arisen over contaminated sites in the Ralston Valley. The citizens calling for thorough cleanup to protect public health. If elected, will you require developers to fully address contamination hazards rather than committing minimal voluntary cleanups, also known as a V cup? Should the LUC be amended to mandate that all infill properties adjacent to schools or residential uses be cleaned to residential standards regardless of the future use of the infill? So basically, with all, if there's a property next to a school or next to residential and someone wants to come in and develop it, if it's contaminated, do you believe that it should be cleaned to residential standards, not just a V cup? And, and maybe some of our, I think some of our council, we can start with a council member, give you the extra ten seconds to explain what a V cup is, either Mike or Randy. Um, but that's a pretty good question, and it's a really big issue in the Ralston Valley because there's a lot of contaminated sites in the Ralston Valley. Mike, what's your?
Randy will fill in the gaps, I don't know everything.
Uh, yeah, so V cup is a voluntary, not a clean up. Uh, and it is at a lower standard than what we've just described here for residential to development. Um, if I'm on city council, I would absolutely be working with my other council members to look at several different policies that dictate what we're gonna build in the city and what's required so that we have a safe environment. Uh, I can tell you as the chair of the planning commission, you see the same cases that the city council members have seen, land use cases, uh, over the last nine years. And we've had several projects that had environmental concerns. And it was really, I think it was the citizens' group that came out and made sure that we were hearing all sorts of angles from each one of these cases so that your representatives, or in that case, we were appointed members of your representatives on city council, we had an opportunity to ask staff, ask the developer questions, to make sure that we understand exactly what's going on. I can tell you there's projects like the Arby Storage Project that really concerned us over one compatibility and access, but also the environmental issues associated with the former landfill that's adjacent to residential property. So yeah, absolutely, I think it would, it would be, uh, perfect for us to look at policy changes that would make sure that we do proper cleanup for contaminated sites. Thank you.
Why don't they let Eric go first, and then we'll go back to you?
Curious, that's good to be. Um, I grew up in Arvada when, um, the Rocket Flats Superfund Rekeed Up Society existed. I'm sure many of you old schoolers can remember that too. Also known as, I guess, uh, the edge of Candellas at this point. So, um, yes, yeah, it's absolutely, I mean, who would say no to that? We've built beautiful neighborhoods on what was at one point, uh, you know, Peetonia World War, post-Cold War kind of site. Um, yes, standards, who would, I, I can't imagine anyone would say no to that. Um, I have a daughter, I have a family, I want the same standards for my neighbors and for my families you want for yours. Um, I see no reason why we ever wanna limit any sort of V cup or environmental cleanup that, that would exist at all. Uh, maybe try even a higher standard than, than has been asked for in the past. Um, again, it's, I, I've written in Arvada with, uh, Rocket Flats and, and it had its ups and downs, I can remember over the years, but there was success in the end. We have a beautiful Arvada now because of it.
Um, so my kids go to Sierra Elementary. I could not imagine handing them to that beautiful, wonderful school. Um, so my kids go to Sierra Elementary. I could not imagine handing them to that beautiful, wonderful school knowing right next to it is a, seeing a potentially toxic, um unhealthy situation right next to them. Um, so absolutely, yes, I think that we need to put guardrails on things like that. Um, I was over at this table with this lovely woman over here, and she was educating me on the RB landfill right there. And I thought to myself, this is horrible, how is this even happening? Um, and to look at it, to to know that that is uh putting the areas next by, that's, we we absolutely need to do something about those things, and so I would not support uh those sorts of situations happening.
Uh, all capital letters, yes. Um, to me, public safety is non-negotiable. Um, my husband is an engineer, and you know, work he does, it's not safety first, it's safety always. And I believe that that lens needs to be applied to every decision we make. I live right at Oak Street and sixty-fourth, right by Oak Park, and there's Ralston Creek that comes by there. And the way I grew up, we were catching frogs, our feet were always wet, bouncing on rocks, all sorts of fun stuff like that. But if you look at the history, that's not what Ralston Creek is. You're questioning, my child, creating this one? Um, and to me, that is not okay. We are borrowing the future from our children, and we need to make sure, like Mike said, working with, back to them better than we found it. And I think it's doing what we can in leadership with policies or review what we make with developers, making sure whatever it takes that the areas our children are playing, we are walking, we are living in, are places we feel safe to splash from the water, walk barefoot in the grass. I think that was just um a basic, a basic need, right? But public safety, I think, communities seem to be absolutely non-negotiable.
Uh, the environmental and public health protections are very important. It's a career passion of mine. Uh, and I work in the environmental field, and you know, one of the things that on council I have noticed is that you need for a fire protection of our land use decisions. Um, some projects have come up, and then I've asked, well, what, you know, you provide a traffic study, but what is the implications or impacts of air pollution from uh traffic? That we're not having that in our system. Thinking about local schools and and kids with asthma, um, how, you know, our ozone, we are out of compliance in this region. So these are things that we have to take into consideration when we are making land use decisions. Um, so I am strongly in favor of more environmental views of our land use decisions.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with just about everything that's been said here. Uh, we've got a lot of perspectives. Uh, I do wanna, you know, environmental cleanup is expensive to get to that residential level, very expensive. I just wanna, you know, throw that reality out there. Um, you know, looking at the engineer side, I'm not an environmental, environmental engineer, uh, and a minor traffic engineer. So, you know, there are also, the public health and safety, you know, is related to uh, you know, previous sites that have been redeveloped, brownfields, so forth, but also traffic, speed of traffic uh as well. Uh, water supply issues, huge one. Water engineering role is, it's not my job, but it it will be my job on council. Make sure water supply is, is one hundred percent. Okay, thank you. Alright, this is a forward-looking blow. We're seeing this kind of bus the uh country right now. I was looking at uh in multiple counties and cities, mostly bad, need to start giving more waters uh making decisions here. Data centers, data centers and other computer centers can be seen as good for local economy. However, this type of development can have specific issues and impacts. So the question is, what's the right balance? Data centers have been claimed to cause constant low frequency and subsonic noise, which is not, as I, as I understand, is not studied in in a normal sensory practice, it's not subsonic noise. There are reports of cardiac and other health effects from this type of noise on the neighbors. Additionally, data centers have reported to drive up electricity costs for whole communities as some of those communities are actively paper part of new infrastructure. Should Arvada adopt a data center zoning category that would include any specific setbacks, noise standards, subsonic standards, and infrastructure responsibilities for private developers considering that data center? Or an A I computer or quantum computing center? And uh, who wants to start?
Okay.
Uh, so the one locally I think that you're referring to would be quantum commons potentially through the school of minds. Um, and from the way I've done the re- or the research I've I've come across is that landwise, it could be unincorporated JPO. So it would be a counter conversation when it comes to the land. But it is a community conversation when it comes to our shared resources. That's gonna be energy use, our water, anybody that's done research, it helps spur a lot of water. Um, and if you wanna be reducing efficiency, and we recently developed the Climate Action Sustainability Plan. So that's to lead both the comprehensive plan and all of our residents um in that area. And sustainability means efficiency. It means how are we impacting our planet and our community? So I feel like the right balance is to looking at the opportunity cost. Okay, great, this is gonna bring this, that, one force in, but how is it going to impact the basic resources we have here uh as a community? Uh, and I think the key importance there is to uh make sure we have the partnerships to put the pressure and make sure that our views in this community over our resources align with what is created. Uh, so my answer, how do you want?
Um, I think again, this comes back to what I said about the comprehensive planning, you know? It was twenty fourteen the last time that we updated, and now we have the distance to to talk about what it doesn't consider. Um, so we need to be updating that now, and that needs to be part of the conversation. And you asked about, oh, maybe we do it, and that needs to be something we have to consider as part of updating our planning. Um, Rebecca already stated the fact that the the one being proposed isn't unincorporated, so we have to be a player at the table. We have to have those conversations with our common partners, uh and make sure that our concerns are being heard and the resources of water and energy, you mentioned, the noise implications all have to be considered. And we have to advocate for our communities uh that are surrounding that proposal. So I would be a strong proponent of uh the city taking those positions to represent the residents within that consideration.
Uh likewise, I think uh a new zoning category makes sense. We develop the uh comprehensive planning plan again. Uh, yeah, I have concerns about some of these uh issues that uh that were raised here with data centers. I'm vaguely familiar with the quantum uh quantum commons school or quantum commons school lines uh property. So yes, I would, I would like to see, you know, a lot of, a lot of character, a lot of interest in this group of people, people who are.
Mike, what do you have? One hour? Four, please. Do you want?
Alright, um, so I I like to think of data centers, they're kind of interesting use, somewhat new, but it's very similar in my opinion to uh storage centers. Right? We have a lot of those, you've seen a lot of those built over the last couple of years. And I'm gonna tell you a quick story. The last time we did our comprehensive uh A I R A was twenty fourteen. In twenty fourteen, we missed storage centers. And it ended up becoming a uh conditional use, and there was a template that was built out. And all of a sudden, we have flood of storage centers that were coming before planning permission at city council. The last of which was a building called Sportline on Wadsworth, uh that later became Fudders Catering. So at the time, Sportline, which is a great, nice building, was gonna be converted into a storage facility, which employs basically one person. So it's not a whole lot of threat to our economy, it's just occupying space. Uh, in that planning commission, you know, I was a young planning commissioner at that point in time. I felt it was wrong, and I felt like it was something that we need to do something about to correct our comprehensive planning language. So I made my point, I tied it to our comprehensive planning goals. I've been a little shady, I got a trouble with the city attorney at the time. But later, Mark Williams came along and put a moratorium on those until staff could figure out the correct solution so that we didn't just have a flood of that type of things. So I'm telling you this because data centers are similar. They don't have a baby, one or two employees for security. They use a ton of energy, they use a lot of water in some cases, and they generate a lot of heat. So we need to work very carefully in our new comp plan out there to make sure this doesn't slip through the cracks so we don't have to rely on a young planning commissioner figuring out a, nice.
Can I just say Mike's answer? Uh, I agree. I was actually being interviewed. This woman is awesome. If we get a chance, we should actually go receive her because she knows so much about all of that. Uh, and she was sharing exactly what Mike is sharing uh about the data center challenges with it and that it's unincorporated. Um, it 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 gives us less authority to do what we would like to do about it, not with it, because I think what we wanna do about it is not have it. Um, but um, you know, the idea of something coming in that's this huge, that doesn't benefit Arvada very much, that also tacks into our limited, finite resources, it's not something that I think we want. And so we have to really push about making sure that that perspective is considered and put the the guardrails on it as best as we can, um, and 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 definitely make our voices heard.
I'm gonna go back to something that I said earlier, that is that I will not represent any certain perspective if elected. I will listen to every issue until we find the right answer. Um, I don't know much about data centers and stuff like that, but I can tell you this is that I can remember a city of Arvada that looked at different types of things and 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 was reluctant for a long time on different things until different perspectives were brought. Let me use the example of Walmart. Uh, the city of Arvada was very pushback on uh bringing a a a company like Walmart to the city of Arvada. And then conversations were happening, and the right answer was found that this actually equated to be better tax dollars to the city. So I don't know anything about data centers, I don't know what the future of data centers or autonomous whatever is is coming into the city. But I will listen, and I will process the information as best I can, and together, I think we will come up with a decision that works for everybody. Um, I regularly think about community on a, on a, on a bigger picture. Um, I actually am in regular communication with uh council members for both uh the city of Wheat Ridge and the city of of Goldwood. I have two of them counseled in my uh my one campaign right now. So I think it's a bigger picture with each of our wives to look at with our community partners.
Have to go with this one. Hey, Aaron. They answered the answer, so we're together.
Yeah, they're gonna answer it very much.
Wait, that's, I'm sorry, absolutely, so we know the answer.
Wasn't as good as Mike's.
Okay, fine, fine. Who were ever writing on theirs? Okay.
It's me.
This question is for all the candidates, and the topic is compatible versus incompatible development. And we're gonna go ahead and give you the ninety seconds. Um, and you're doing so good, we're just, we're writing out questions as we speak over here, which we got all the time, right? Uh, so we will start, we're, I can't remember where we started last time, I think we started over here. You started, so we'll start at this table. You can pick one, anyone? And the question is, what is your definition of compatible development versus incompatible development? We have seen examples of an applicant adding, hello, boys, thank you.
I can say that this was not your time.
Your coffee in class. What is your definition of compatible development versus incompatible development? We have seen examples of an applicant adding one foot to a fence complaining that compatibility has been achieved. What is your benchmark for what changes to a proposal actually create a more compatible solution for the adjacent community versus just window dressing? Feel free to leave a comment if you want to. We have manual settings.
Uh, it's a great question, I think, because uh again, I have a district three Old Town Arvada person, and I think there's a lot of community heritage and history in my neighborhood. Um, what's compatible, what's incompatible? I think we'd all have to look at what the neighborhood is, what what it's gonna turn into. Um, I think it's gonna ever stay the same forever, but we also wanna, uh, you know, leave some character to it. Um, I think of communities like, let's say, North End or where some older homes are being scraped and new homes are being put in. If you've ever driven down the road seeing that house that just doesn't fit within the community, just don't think that's um, that's not what I'm gonna see in in Old Town Arvada. But on the other hand, I don't wanna leave it old, Old Town Arvada. You know what I mean? I think we gotta look at what's the next up and coming thing, and does it fit with the community? Does it fit with the community standard? Uh, does it fit with what people want? I think this is what public comment is for. I think that um when something is proposed to be built into a neighborhood, it needs public comments so that we can feel like the neighborhood is growing in the direction that we want it to grow in. Uh, not just a, a planning commissioner, a body of seven. I think it needs to be a we conversation about what is compatible to you versus what's compatible to me. Conversation is the only way, the only way that's gonna happen.
I mean, I think when I think about compatible versus incompatible, I think about something that doesn't make sense that is there. For example, a storage unit next to a residential area. Um, that may not make sense that that is there. Um, and so being thoughtful about what's allowed in our neighborhoods, what isn't, uh, and then we recognize that we have a a space that, uh, you know, is maybe better suited for a, a park. We make that decision of the community uh versus putting something in there that the people don't want. And so that's basically looking something compatible, and the community says, yes, it's what we want, then it's compatible. And I think we need to make sure that that, that those voices are heard, and then that's the decisions that we're making on behalf of the community. Um, I I would like to see projects that have maybe not started to be finished. I understand that there's some like tasks that just stop. For example, maybe this could be completed. So maybe going back and looking at things that we have yet to finish and finishing them so that they can remain uh as something that's complete now in our, in our wonderful power.
So I'm gonna divide this into two camps, the micro and the macro. So I think as a city, there's a hundred twenty thousand, a hundred twenty-five thousand residents, around fifty thousand household, and they all look very different. Rural parks in the city are huge lots, and there's some very dense areas of the city in apartments, condos, and townhomes. So compatibility is going to be a range of things. And on the, on the macro side, all across the city, I think it's important for us to consider the jobs that are available on that. And do the housing, does the housing supply that we currently have in the city reflect the jobs that are available on our city? If we do not need that particular one in the macro, then our infrastructure is gonna suffer. People are gonna be leaving the city and coming back into it every day to either go to their jobs or to go anywhere where they've been, that they've worked in the city. So that's the the macro. But micro is more, I have problems with these questions here towards, when you get down to the individual neighborhood level, what does compatibility look like? And I think it's a combination of footprint, square footage, density, and traffic impacts and impacts to quality of life. There are certain things that just make the neighborhood what it is. Access to trails and open space, being able to drive, come on your driveway without worrying about getting sides. How I look before you drive, but you know what it means, when these neighborhoods have less traffic than others. And I think that gets to the core of compatibility. And I'm happy to tell you, if these standards are defined in our comprehensive planning, they are the one that will be defined and learned well. It's important to allow leaders that will implement first.
Rebecca?
She did last time.
Oh, Randy.
Let's do Randy.
I have another person on. Um, I think when you talk about compatibility and incompatibility, it's, it's really important to look at what are the impacts of any development on the surrounding area. Um, and and how does that change the character? Uh, thinking about impact of traffic, air pollution, and and quality of life. And so as a, a council member, it's really, really important to be listening. to be listening to the public when they come to speak to us about what that impact on our quality of life is going to be. Um, so you know, it it's gonna be different for you and it's gonna be different for me. And that's what we have to take all of those ideas, all of those voices to make that decision, is this compatible or not? So the things that I will look at is what is that surrounding area? And what is the community telling me that they want in that surrounding area? And again, it comes back as as Mike and I and others have said, is the comprehensive plan is the place to start to lay out that vision of what you want in your neighborhood, in your area. So obviously, we have to look at the comprehensive plan and say, does this match what's in there or not? And you know, I recently opposed the change to our definition of open space that came before council. Uh, and let the fund to not put that new language in because we need to keep open space, open space for our our trailer which is so important.
Um, so compatibility in housing, why did you buy your home where your home is? Uh, some folks I've talked to around the media was where the school was and that's a whole different story. We'll talk about that later. Um, but why, what brought you to Arvada or what what brought you to buying your home or living in your home where it is? And compatible housing is if you have a wonderful, charming, one-story brick home. And it's being proposed that a two-to-three-story cited house with very modern look, a very modern look. It is gonna go in across the street. That is not compatible. Um, folks with independent remodels, you buy a house and you want it to look modern, that's a whole different story. We can't fill that as much. But when it comes to lands that the city has or or a developer coming in, you do have control over that. And making sure that we are talking to the community, we are having a conversation with you before they're getting to city council. That the conversations are creative, innovative, because again, there's experts within this room, within this community. And it is important that we take all of that into account. Um, incompatible is uh does the infrastructure not fit? You know, one area, if you have a bunch of families which can't push your stroller down the sidewalk, that's also not not completely compatible. One of, like, we're in plain in the same place.
Uh, couple of things I can get with this. We we've all seen incompatible development in our data, particularly West Arvada. Um, there is the compatible uh development that's being considered in McIntyre, just right outside the uh the city limits. Uh, we we kinda know it when we see it as residents. Uh, it's unfortunate. We'll give another example. Uh, we do have two golfers in our data in my districts, uh Lake Harbor and uh Indian Tree. And those are, you know, self-funded areas, recreational areas. Uh, they pay for themselves. They don't generate income for the city. But uh they have been there a long time and they're, they offer a great opportunity for seniors to uh, uh particular seniors to uh use and enjoy, you know, open space close to their home. I almost wish there was something like that being considered developed in West Arvada, um, in District Four. Uh, that being said, uh also mixed mixed use, uh how much residential, or excuse me, how much retail would be mixed into new new build residential? I would think that actually would be probably a very limited amount of of retail would go into that mixed use. Uh, a little concerned also about hotels and hotels also being able to be uh put in there in areas that are broken.
Well, thanks guys. We're really ahead of schedule, but um you came up with a hot question. Uh, who was brought up tonight that you, the the taxes from a residence do not fund the city, but business? Sales talks does. We're also facing this whole situation of AI replacing workers, right? At this point, you know, I think Dell just lost twenty-five thousand engineers the other day, just it all. I've talked to engineers, I've talked to folks that are just worried about AI and my pilot profession, you know, is coming as well. So when we're looking at land use planning, it's not just residents, but it's businesses as well. How do you plan for businesses that will be most resilient to AI and and replace computers to keep our data successful going into fifty-year, a hundred-year mark? How how do we stay abreast of this situation? Uh, it's a difficult question. I understand, but uh Mike, I'm gonna start you because it's difficult.
I've been told many things, difficult, in a way. Uh, all right. So I'll start just by saying something I think everybody here could like to do. And that's that Arvada has a very unique small business ecosystem. Every part of the city has some unique shop or one-off bakery or thing that we can go to and it's only in Arvada. And I think if we're trying to build resiliency into our business community and our tax base, I think making sure that it's not overly difficult or cumbersome to start and run a successful business that's more awkward than our city is a great way to do that. Because one of the things that AI has proven to be pretty terrible at is coming up with that sort of special thing. There's that uncanny valley that still exists where we can see when it's artificially generated image, even it's really good. Or a song, some people see ones out there, but a lyrical tune will tip it off. So I think that's probably one of the biggest things and that's been true before AI. Uh, the future is kind of funny. You don't know what it's gonna look like until it's here. I think if I were to go back in time right now and try and convince people in twenty fourteen that there were gonna be little electric scooters and bicycles just flying all over the place. And you could just hop on them and go wherever you wanted. You didn't have to follow. They would have said that was nuts, but here we are. I deal with it all the time.
That is a, that is a tough question. Um, you know, being in the field of wellness, I think that wellness is an area to explore. Um, you know, you can argue, engage in a therapy session with AI. Um, but there's gonna be something different about it. You're not gonna be seeing the same feeling and experience that you're gonna have with a real person. Um, I think that moving towards uh things that make people feel healthy, that make people feel well, that make people feel community and a sense of connectedness, creativity. Those are all things that we've we can explore in Arvada. Uh, so that we have more of that to offer, not just for the people in our town, but also the people who need shop here, visit here. I would love to see the the farmer's markets. I love going to that in Old Town. Uh, see the unique things that people work in those markets. And my husband hates when I go, like, that's a lot of money, I'm going to spend money. And having a little bit more of those niche uh opportunities in our in our area that can be created by the computer.
Yeah, that Mike, thanks. Actually, uh Mike brought up everyone here and that is with the up that farmer's market. Uh, everybody knew that uh Nathan Mudd was uh was gonna be on this on this ballot as well. Man got sick. Uh, I've loved this guy since I've known him. So Nate, if you have to listen to anybody, we love you. Um, I, wow, what a question, Mike. I I is this something you thought of on your own? Did we talk about this together? Mike, so tell me, you said we. You have a mouse in your shirt pocket or what's going on here?
What's that?
We, anyway. Um, we have a community here that I think is based on um uniqueness. Again, District Three, Old Town Nevada. I I live there. I love there. I it's my place. I consider it the gem of Arvada and I consider one of the gems of the metro area. Um, how are we gonna save off AI? I don't know. We're gonna keep keep on moving forward with supporting our businesses, shopping here, playing here, eating here, supporting our businesses as a community. Um, I know I do, I do it every day. And um, you know, I just, I think the the way to save off the future is to stay present as present.
I'll go ahead and go. Uh, there are, um, some of the bill actually does get corrected by the city of Nevada. It's not four, four bills, uh those are parts utilities in addition to sanitation districts. So there are some property taxes that go to our industry that that live in. Uh, to answer the your question about AI, I think, yeah, it will certainly uh make workplace more efficient in a lot of ways. And but I I think the human element's never gone. There's artificial intelligence, part of all artificial intelligence, it's not ready. So you always have to have a human check on just about every decision, okay? Legal decisions, engineering decisions, psychological decisions, uh all those. There's always gonna be, that's never gonna be lost. Um, but yeah, things will change rapidly. I think, you know, there is a chance that, you know, we will become a dead city in a hundred years. But uh as of today, I'm I'm interested in kind of slowing that roll a little bit and making good, careful decisions. Uh, and 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 not not letting one, you know, one side of uh the development issue control the other. Uh, and that that will be a focus for me on council. And um, you know, I I I didn't get a chance to introduce, I am, uh, I do have uh two boys that I didn't do some introduction. And my, uh, we're in Jeffco schools as well. Um, so that just something I might add about myself.
I think it's so important that we continue to build resiliency and be forward-looking. And so in doing that, uh, you know, you look back at like the Great Recession. And you look at cities and you compare them and how do they survive the recession? And what we found was that cities that did really well and came out of the recession and didn't lose a lot of businesses were those that had businesses tied into the needness of that community. And so that's what we need to continue to do is look at what's unique about our data, our history, the arts and culture that we have here, what's gonna attract tourism to Arvada. Those are the things that are gonna keep us resilient in the future. Um, we've gotta, you know, look at other businesses as well, of course, to be diversified. But continue to hold on to that core that makes us special and unique because that's what's gonna help us be resilient. And then the other thing that I want to talk about in terms of resiliency, um, is, you know, being economically competitive in this challenging, changing environment. And that includes thinking about um the impacts of climate change on our businesses and our communities. And and one of those things that I think about a lot is what are we doing to build the infrastructure for the next blackout? What are we doing to build our infrastructure to the next implosion and after? And how do we attract businesses to show that we can keep the power on when that happens? And so that's thinking about developing things like microboards that are dependent on a solar garden and will be able to come off the grid when the grid goes out, keep our business in the loop.
Um, I personally love this question, so thank you for for asking this. Um, my dad was a program manager with Dell. Um, and I'm sure we remember Clopiness, the drug giants, and we've come a long way. We've come from when I was born and computers were the size of a room to now that they're in your watch. Uh, so I think looking at what we've already seen happen and how we're kind of in a technology revolution. Um, and our society hasn't caught up. Even though we have these things that are supposed to make us more connected, we are more disconnected than ever. Uh, to answer your AI question, they could take jobs. I think another way to look at it is what can AI do to support a small business? That would usually need an overhead cost for uh maybe someone who does their marketing. Um, but they are able to use AI with no cost to get their their small business up. So that that person, whatever they're selling, flowers, jewelry, um, they're able to spend time doing what they love um and being with the people they love. Uh, so I think that is is one area I would take a look at. Um, and I think another thing we can do is, as we become more disconnected, continuing to support our local youth sports. Places where we are getting together outside and teaching children to move and breathe and get off their phone.
Well, thanks everybody. Um, that is completing our long form question. We get that little lightning round though. Um, maybe five seconds, a simple yes or a no would suffice, or if you wanna do a yes, but or no, but. So we understand things everybody wants, about five seconds each, or but I keep moving on. Real quick, Mike, let's take a break, no break?
What's that?
Let me take a break. Well, literally this is the last of us.
Oh, great.
Yeah, but it's um and then you get your statements and then work. Right, certainly, room and all, stand, how do you start? So, um, round one, we're gonna start here and then we're gonna just kind of round and round on what we want. So it'll be Mike, Denise, Karen, you know, who starts?
Just, just gonna go like this.
Yeah, what do we, and this are yes, no?
Yes, no.
Yes, no, yes, no, do we wanna put a little caveat on the yes, but I think this, first, I think we want.
Yeah, one sentence.
Yeah, so if elected, do you support limits on time, place and manner of suicide? And also low anxiety levels of businesses, including setbacks in residence, hour of operation, HVAC, order requirements and such?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
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 Great. Next, we're gonna start with Denise. Do you support restoring the all-online option for citizen participation in city council and planning commission meetings?
Oh, yes.
Yes, order is always moving forward, yes.
Yes, yep, yep.
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, round three, we're starting. West Amory over here. In Jefferson County, I would comparison consent agenda items can be moved to the regular agenda by a citizen. Would you support this change in Arvada?
Do it again, keep that.
Okay, we all familiar consent agenda, right? So in Jefferson County, we're sitting at a meeting saying, oh, we're gonna be there about some reason. And then we hear consent agenda item and it's like, oh, I didn't know what was going on. We can literally stand up in Jefferson County and say, can you move this to a regular hearing? And actually have it heard, the advocate can speak, people can align. Right now, as I understand in Arvada, a city council can move it from the consent to the regular agenda to be heard. However, if we're there, we wouldn't be able to do that. So there we have a a a change of process to to make a citizen say, hey, I didn't know what was going on, can we can we have it heard today? So in Jefferson County, like I said, consent agenda items can be moved to the regular agenda by a citizen. Would you support this change in Arvada? Yes.
Yes, for good reason.
Yes, and I would encourage the citizen to speak on why.
Uh, yes, more powerful people?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. And we're gonna start with Rebecca. The city charter requires a vote of the registered electors for any sale of a base of a park. Would you support expanding the city charter uh provision to include all parks in open spaces online?
Yes.
Yes, but we have to go to the voters if there's a change on the charter.
Sure, correct. Randy, right, yes.
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 All right, and we're gonna start with Randy. Well, would you consider allowing all citizen comment time at city council, leading to increase to five minutes, six minutes?
I think we should consider it, yeah.
Yes, five minutes.
Yes.
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 Yes, I still agree with you. And I would say yes, but we need to also remember the conversation here earlier about the potential change of the comment that is being discussed right now, generally depends. I have then the 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 next thing with the laws of learning and the laws of privacy, the laws of recency. I brought brought this up before. Law of privacy means what you hear first, you hear that's what I did, that's how you first have it, right? You know, first impressions. Law of recency is when you hear something last, it's most easily remembered. So would you allow any citizen rebuttal, even a per, even a percentage during hearings? So would citizens ever have any chance of rebuttal?
I'm interested, I'm interested in hearing more about that, but I haven't seen it done, so it's hard for me to say yes.
Well, if you wanna see it done, watch these uh the hearing they had against uh Project Indiana. Because we did in fact have, thanks to city council, a little citizen rebuttal time and he felt very good.
Based on that, answer is?
Every issue will be looked at and the right answer will be come up with, yes.
Uh, if we're doing our talks, we're gonna know when there is a specific conversation that needs to be had. So I think setting up rebuttal time, yes, we did.
She brought this up. We were discussing it last week on council. And my request was for the city staff to actually put that in writing and be fully transparent in our rules and procedures.
Excellent, yes. Okay, uh, we will start with Eric on this one. Would you support a requirement for all red lines that are presented on the agenda to be viewable by all on the main screen during hearings?
Say red lines?
Red lines, yes.
Yes, I agree.
I love the idea, yes.
Yes, it's pretty.
Absolutely, yes.
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 All right, and we're gonna go backwards to Mr. Randy over here. Given the challenges of infill development. Given the challenges of infill development, would you support a new designation in the map plan? An LHC specifically designed to address infill development? Have we considered it as part of our map plan or decisions? Yes.
Yes, everybody have more?
A decision will be made based on all current information and will listen to everyone.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, infill is a special type of development, and she has to. In the very last one, um, that's new to our list, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the FAA how many city controls the jurisdiction, right? When you're about those kind of innovative nation movements up in Rock Mountain Metro, planes need to fly, money. But is it proper to prohibit some commercial drone delivery operations from certain satellite classifications? Such as like industrial, mixed-use, residential, well, parks, why or why not? These would be delivery drones, right now Walmart is giving a hundred different, um, delivery centers right now via drones and buy it with six. So where they land might be a city issue, but where they fly could be just the FAA. So is it proper to look at where they could land or to litter drop stuff off by somebody? Yes, I don't want Arvada to be anything to find out this huge problem of drones, for sure.
Yes.
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 Yes, I want us to be able to remedy what we can, but it sounds like there's a lot of different planes.
Strangely, yes.
I can't believe we got through that lightning round, we had a hard stop at eight twenty at East Island. You know, closely working around the corner here, and close out, we're candid, closing comments. And you will each have three minutes to stand on any of the questions asked and to share your final thoughts on why you are the best qualified to serve the citizens of Arvada. So, um, I can't even remember who was last. We'll just do.
Who wants to go first?
How about that?
All right, Mike, you go first. We'll just, we'll just start going this way, are you guys okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. Is Eric, you okay with being last?
I'm okay. All right, thanks, everybody, for sticking with us, it's been a long night, I know you had a choice between us and the Broncos. Once again, I'm.
You're right.
You're the one who.
My moment three.
I'm kind of interested in all of the uniforming civic duties and monthly rid lists. So once again, I'm Mike Griffith, I'm running for the Adlars team, I specifically run for the Adlars team because there is issues all across the city in the Adlars team, but I have been heard you. And I believe I have the skill set, the interest, the background, and and overall just the experience to take on these issues and work with the six other council members to make sure that we continue to deliver for the city in the future. The thing that I'd like to leave you with is a, uh, a sense of this being the game time. Every election that we call, so then every seat is gonna say, this is the one, and it means a lot. Right now, I'm telling you that we're at a hundred twenty-five thousand residents, and we have water and resources to go out to about a hundred forty thousand residents. It's about our carrying capacity of the state. We are not gonna build on everything spoken in space, as Randy mentioned. We're not gonna build in parks, obviously that takes a vote of the entire city, and it's just not gonna happen. There's only so much we can build, infill happens slowly, we're largely built out. So with that in mind, things that we build over the next couple of years really matters. Currently, and I said this earlier, our jobs and employment opportunities in Arvada doesn't clearly reflect or accurately reflect the housing type of levels available here, so we have a limited opportunity to correct that issue. And I think the best way to do that is to look at the comprehensive plan and make sure we bring the community along with that conversation. But beyond that, we're gonna have to work together, council members, no folks to get elected here, uh, in a couple of weeks, to address the policy environment that makes it so hard to build anything but apartments and large expensive homes. We leave the missing middle piece, I'm talking about bundles, I'm talking about ranches, I'm talking about homes for seniors. If we don't do that, we may lose the opportunity. Once the shovel goes in the ground, it's gonna be there, whatever is built for about fifty years. So let's not play around, it's game time, I might go for Arvada, please visit my website, give me a call, come see me, I'll make a lot of talk, we'll talk more about it, thank you.
I like the idea of we need some middle ground, because I think that that's what I would bring to city council, is that I'm a middle type of person. I work with first responders in my private practice, but I also treated what we would call them crooks in jail, in incarcerated situation. So I can listen to both sides of arguments pretty, uh, intentionally, and I think that I have the ability to empathetically listen and negotiate and tend to some sort of middle ground. I don't know everything yet, I am very, I'm a quick learner, and I'm a quick observer, and I like to communicate with people and like to engage people. So I think that's what I would like to bring, again, I'm going back to my C's, connection, conversation, community, and that's what Arvada represents, and I wanted to continue to, uh, to represent that.
Thank you, um, I just wanna, I think, go back to some of the things I saw with, we, we opened this conversation. Um, I think I bring a very different perspective, uh, to this conversation up here at all tonight, and to, I would bring to the council. I'm Arvada native, um, I grew up here, I live here, I love here, uh, my daughter's fourteen, I just adore her childhood in this city. Not going anywhere. And, um, you know, I think something to look at is that, I I'm gonna go back to it again, I'm not a politician. Really, your friend, the guy who's gonna live down the street, who's gonna listen to you all day long. Um, I like the idea of community coming together, I like the idea of discussing things before we make radical decisions. Um, I would be honored to be elected, to be the custodian of what I think is one of the greatest cities in America, and what I think is the greatest district in Arvada, no offense to one twenty-four, but, uh, I think this is a really special place that we have in Old Town Arvada. Um, I'm extremely honored and lucky to have been endorsed by the current city councilman, John Marriott. I'm also very honored and humbly thankful to also have been endorsed by previous mayor, Mark Williams. Uh, both of, uh, I've, I've had conversations with both of them, and I think that that brings something really special to the table, that, um, you know, again, it's just neighbor versus neighbor, um, we talked a lot about, you know, what we do and what we live, um, you know, my daughter and I pick up trash on one of the adoptive student programs. I've served on lots of volunteer communities over the years, um, I'm just part of you, and I wanna part of continuing, and hopefully be elected to represent it.
Um, so I believe we all agree, we want safe neighborhoods, we want stable housing, and we want strong schools. Uh, I grew up in New England, that's where I'm originally from, um, we packed the cap, I'm a young, um, and and the table I grew up at had a grandmother who was a Democrat, and my grandfather, a Republican. And they would joke that they were going to the ballot box to cancel each other out, but they would always vote. And I had some uncles who loved to argue. They would just argue for the sake of arguing, see the flip halfway through the conversation. Um, and what that taught me is to welcome disagreements, to welcome conflict. When we are having a debate, that is how we see the whole picture. And one of the reasons I'm running is because it doesn't feel safe to do that anymore. It doesn't always feel safe to speak up, uh, on how you feel or what you believe. And it's not just the safety of adults, it's it's the safety of children as well. And what I believe is, the, I choose to be here in Arvada. I moved here, I met my husband here, we are building our lake here, and I'm incredibly involved with the Arvada Historical Society, which I just know from history, it's our, our, our new event. And I believe as we're looking ahead to the future and what we're borrowing from our children, we also really need to take time to preserve and tell the stories of how we got here. It's a balance between the two of those. I am here, I am listening, and I am ready to work for you. And that is why I believe I just started your, your vote in November, um, because I love doing this stuff, and I love what Arvada, choose to be here.
Well, thank you again, and also by Coalition for holding this great forum, and thank you all for being here. I'm really impressed, you know, the hours being discussed on very important issues. I'm excited about the future of Arvada, the future of our community that I call home. Um, I was raised United Methodist, and the founder of Methodism, John Wesley, said, do all the good you can in all the places you can, in all the ways you can. And this is something that's really stuck with me, it's it's like my moral compass, and so I'm always thinking about every day, what's the good I can do right here in my community? And that starts with listening, um, listening and bringing people together and trying to solve problems. For example, Deborah lives over by Sheridan and Eden, and she called me and she said, Randy, I have a problem. I walk through my King Supers every day, and there is this very dangerous intersection, where there's a crosswalk that goes into the parking lot, and it, there's no stops on it, and so cars aren't stopping. So I talked to the city manager, we reached to the council property manager of the King Supers, and we got a stop sign up there. So now that place is a little bit safer for residents and pedestrians. Another example that I wanna share with you is, um, over in Lake Arbor, the HOA is very active, and Jenny, Ron, Sarah, and Stephanie all reached out to me and said, Randy, our pool has been closed for two years now, it closed during COVID, and then we had this major leak, and the city was planning to just shut it down and not build. And we talked about how important this asset is to the community, for kids to come and be able to play in the summer, and for families to gather. It was really an important core of who the community was, especially during the summer. So we worked on city council, and I led the effort to say we need to reopen the pool, and so we have fixed that leak, it's been open for the past two years. And now we're in the planning process to involve the community in more long-term planning, we're gonna have to replace that pool, and look at what other processes we can put in there that would benefit the community. The last example I wanna talk about is Seventy-Seventh Sims. Um, Linda, Drew, and Kelsey in that neighborhood have been trying so hard to get their crosswalk fixed because it's a very dangerous place, it's at the top of the hill, and when cars are coming up the door, they don't see the pedestrians crossing that crosswalk. So I worked very hard with our city staff, just a few weeks ago, we got a particular flashy beacon put in, so that now when cars are coming up that hill, there's a flashing beacon to alert them that there are pedestrians at that crosswalk that they didn't see earlier. With my reelection bid and recommitting to Arvada residents to work tirelessly for our neighborhoods, and to enhance the quality of life for every Arvada, so with your support, I wanna continue to do that work to make Arvada a better country.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, yeah, I'm also running a District One, and a lot of projects that Randy's worked on, and in fact, for me, through the pool, uh, there will be continuous decisions, uh, you know, to what what is gonna happen next in that particular space in Lake Arbor, uh, where I live, and I I walk around the lake every morning. Um, I jumped into the late, in the race way later than everybody else, uh, at the very end. Um, last fall, Mike, um, what is it, he was one of seventeen, and and I was two, to put our name to, uh, for the open seat that Lisa Parra left. Uh, at that point, it was, it, the, that was kind of the beginning of my timeline. I assumed that somebody could jump in, and there were seventeen people that ran, um, and I assumed that somebody would jump in, before long, I said, nobody had. Uh, it just didn't seem right to me that, that, uh, you know, Randy run out of post, and it's, you know, really nothing gets to him. If he's reelected, I'm gonna sleep okay at night. Uh, the issues that are important to me are, you know, really the solid engineering review, uh, you know, addressing the homelessness issue, uh, let proper man use, not letting developers run wild. Those are issues that are important to me, those are issues that are important to District Four, District One, District Three, uh, and Two. Uh, when that goes up for reelection in a couple of years. Um, another thing that was mentioned tonight is ADUs, uh, those are an additional option. Uh, Mike actually is a pretty good, uh, piece on that as well, too, for his website, or, uh, regarding, and we don't really produce a ton of those, those are a good option for some infill development. Um, and there are standardized plans you can use online to do that. Uh, we also didn't really talk about politics or parties all that much, but Rebecca brought it in the very end. Uh, which is good, this is a non-partisan collection, I think a lot of us are pretty much on the same team, uh, we're on Team Arvada here, and, um, and that that will remain after this, so I'm I'm glad to be here. Uh, if you do Google me, I am a politician, I've been involved, but I'm not listed as an engineer, uh, even though that's what I do professionally, but that, um, that's just the case, you can find me at ericforjeffco.com, number four, uh, and read a little bit more of my mission and see.
All right, well, I'm gonna jump up here and wrap this up.
Third quarter, nope.
All right.
What do you have?
I'd like to thank Five Parks for allowing us to use their facility this company. I also love the local volunteers, Arvada City volunteers that came out to help us set up, and, um, just all of you for caring about Arvada and engaging. Um, be sure to get your T-shirt when you leave, take one for every member of your family. Wear it proudly when you walk that trail, and I do wanna encourage everybody to, don't know a lot about the Roswell Valley Coalition, I would encourage you to go on through our website, poke around a little bit, and learn about what we do. Um, we get lots of emails all the time from lots of different community members, and we just like to be good collaborators, because this is our, we all live here, and we wanna, we'll share our resources, we'll share information, we'll connect you with people. I had someone email me just the other day asking about something at Candela's, and I said, here's how you get ahold of Bob Pfeiffer. So you, we just want to be able to connect people to the resources they need to stay engaged in their community, so that Arvada can be what we all want it to be. So I, um, encourage you to stay, um.
Connected.
The last thing I'm gonna say is, this is my, my last thing, my last thing. The last thing I wanna say about infill development, from a person who lives really close to the last big infill development in Arvada. Infill development to me, and I think to all of us, uh, Arvada C, is it's like a puzzle. What we have in Arvada because of years of what I would call maybe not necessarily good planning, sometimes good planning, sometimes not so good planning, and not as thoughtful. It sounds like you all are talking about being more thoughtful, and I appreciate that. Because what happens when you don't have thoughtful planning is you end up with kind of a hodgepodge, and then you have these little infill pieces, and you don't know what's gonna fit there to be compatible, because we all live around them. So I think it's like a puzzle, and you have to find the right piece that fits in the puzzle, and that's how you achieve compatibility. So that's kind of what we try to do, we try to help the city find those puzzle pieces to where we can say, this will make it compatible, or this is why it's incompatible, and we will continue to show up. And we can never get anything in three minutes, you guys are so good. We can't get it in in three minutes, but we're gonna keep trying, and we hope that the city council will keep allowing the citizens to engage, and, um, we'll see you at the next city council meeting. Thank you all for coming.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, great. If you think you said it, yeah. Actually, Eric, jump in, jump back in.
Hey, Eric, do you mind if I get a photo?
All good, great, by the way.
There we go.
Three, two, one. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for all you do.